Peoria City Council, special study session for Thursday, March 27th. Would you please rise, join us in a moment of silence, and the Pledge of Allegiance led by Council Youth Liaison, Thomas Pryor.
(inaudible) (inaudible) of the United States of America and the Republic of British Stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have been through the budget and it's time for the reconciliation.
Very good. Well, welcome back, Mayor and Council, for our third night of budget deliberations and discussions. And congratulations for all the progress that was made over the past two evenings. Really made a lot of progress getting through the budget. And as you'll recall, when we broke last night, you had a few things that you had put on the flip chart for things that you were interested in adding back into the budget. And so we want to address those items in the context of balancing. And find out, of course, if there's anything else, any other questions that the council has. But I think if we're down to these items, we're really quite close. So with that, I thought what we would do is I'd turn it over to Katie, and she would walk through on a PowerPoint, kind of what we have on the chart and some suggestions for how you might approach the decision making. So if that's comfortable to the Mayor and Council, I'd suggest we proceed that way.
Good.
You good? Okay? Katie?
Okay. Thank you, Mayor and Council. So this evening, on the agenda, of course, is to discuss the council interests and the follow-up items related to those requested items that council had over the last couple of days. And also, we'll spend a little bit of time talking about some funding options that we can look at. And then at the end of the evening, we'll need to ensure that we have council consensus to move forward with any of these recommended or requests, okay? And then we'll, of course, give you the obligatory budget schedule for how we're going to move forward from this point forward. I did ask Mr. Mattenley, Mr. Bill Mattenley, to come and give some information. Councilmember Ames, you had asked about an opportunity to do some additional street overlay north of, I believe it was, Thunderbird Road on the 75th Avenue project.
Or alternative.
Or alternative. And so Bill's going to just go through a quick presentation that will kind of outline some of the options and some of the pavement condition in those areas currently.
Great. Thank you, Katie. I'm going to take a step back. This was a slide that Andy showed us on Tuesday night, and this was part of the CIP presentation, and it is our arterial street overlay program. This is a program, we budget money every other year, and we focus on the most needy arterial roadway based on our pavement evaluation, our pavement maintenance program. In this case, it is funded every other year. Our budget for FY 2015 is $1.3 million. This photograph here is in the vicinity of Peoria High School. In fact, that's Peoria High School on the right side of the slide. And what we do with this program is we mill the edge of the asphalt down. You can see that that's the operation that's going on here. We're removing asphalt near the curb. And then we do an overlay about two inches to, one to two inches in thickness. I'm going to talk about a couple of different segments of 75th Avenue and the evaluation that we've done on them. And I've got some photographs that I'll show you as well. The segment of 75th Avenue between Thunderbird and Greenway Road, that one mile, had a rubberized asphalt overlay in 2006. And we have a condition rating on that of 80. Now, 80 is like the scores you get in high school, zero to 100. 100 is good. 80 is a good grade. 70 is average. Below 70 is not so good. What we do, you see the condition notes. These come right from our inspectors. This inspection was done in December of this last year, so it's real current. And what they noted, similar to what Councilor Ames mentioned, is you've got some cracking. In this case, they describe it as light to medium longitudinal, meaning it runs down the same direction as the stripes, and transverse, which would be perpendicular. And they describe them as light to medium. I'll show you some photographs. And we do have some maintenance and utility patches in that area.
You have them already, or you're looking at doing them?
We've done this evaluation. This evaluation was done in December. So this is a photograph taken today of 75th Avenue looking north towards Greenway Road. The intersection, the signalized intersection you see up there is Greenway Road. And you can see that this asphalt is really holding up fairly well. This is a rubberized asphalt pavement. This is how we would expect it to wear. It's got a nice, a nice smooth finish to it. You can see on this photo, there is a crack there. It's not a large crack, but it is a crack. I'll zoom in on that. This is what I would describe as longitudinal, or excuse me, transverse cracking. Now, this is the kind of thing we should be taking care of and will be taken care of through our routine maintenance. In other words, crack fill is the kind of thing we do through our routine maintenance. Likewise, you know, I looked at this this morning myself, and there are some utility patches out there. Some of them are older. Those need to be pulled out and reworked. But again, that's part of what we would do as part of our normal operations throughout the year.
Yeah. The complaints I have been getting, and my observation has been Sweetwater to Thunderbird, not, not.
Exactly right. I'll show you that just now. So this is the next segment I'm describing. This is actually a two-mile segment, and this is the area we're proposing to address this year. That's what we're going to take care of in this program.
Thunderbird to Peoria.
Yes, and in exactly that order, based on our available funding. We'll start at Thunderbird and go far, as far south as possible. Now, we talked about the intersection projects, one at 75th and Peoria, one at 75th and Cactus. Those projects are going to be out a few more years because of the federal funding and the way they're working those programs. We're not going to run through those intersections and tear that up again with the project we do later. But we're going to come up to those and reasonably match those areas. So again, try to take our dollars as far as we can with those projects. This segment, this two-mile segment, had an asphalt overlay, not, this would be a conventional asphalt overlay, that was done in 2001, so it's an older pavement. It has the current rating of 65. That's below 70. It's not a passing grade. The conditions we see there are weathered and ravelling, reflective cracking, meaning there were cracks in the pavement before they did the prior overlay, and those are starting to come back through. We call it reflective cracking. In this case, it described the cracks as being medium to large longitudinal, running along the center line, and transverse with heaving. Heaving meaning that where the cracks come together, they're pushing against one another, and it gives you a bump when you drive across them. We see block cracking, meaning some of these cracks that are longitudinal and those that are transverse are coming together and forming squares, which is not a good thing for your asphalt. And again, we have utility and maintenance patches in that area. So here's what this looks like. This is 75th and Sweetwater, and Vice Mayor Ames, this is exactly the intersection you were talking about last night. This is part of that project. It would be done in this, in this current fiscal year. And you can see very distinctly different from the photographs you saw a second ago.
This is in the 1.3?
I'm sorry?
This is in the 1.3?
Yes, this is going to be in 2015. This is in our budget.
Oh, okay. But I heard you say Thunderbird to Peoria.
So that's, yeah, so this goes all the way down. It would be including this stretch here.
Oh.
So it is indeed included. And again, you were exactly right on. I mean, look at the condition of this, just from this photograph versus the prior photograph. Look at this, what you see here is, again, you've got, you know, you see how the cracks are coming together? You see, actually, there's a little bit of a dip in the, in the middle lane there. So this is, this is a good candidate for that mill and overlay, and this is the project we're going to be doing this next year. And I'm getting into Katie's slides now, so that was what I wanted to present. Any questions?
No. So it's already in the budget?
Yes, sir.
Okay, but you did say Thunderbird to Peoria when you present, when it was presented, or maybe Andy did, so.
Yeah, it's that two-mile, it's that entire two-mile stretch.
Okay.
Are you good with that?
Obviously.
Are you done with your presentation? If not, I'll wait till the end.
I am done, Councilor Yomi.
Okay. Do you have a list of how many streets you're going to be doing this year? I mean, you know, a list of the areas that you're going to be doing, or is this just the only one?
I have a list of the, these are the arterial overlay. The other is the local roadways, and I do indeed have a list. It's not a very short list. It's a very long list, and I can certainly provide that for council.
Yeah, I'd like to get one of those and see districts I have, you know, because we have a lot of areas, just like everybody else does, in my district that needs repairing. New top, put on whatever you do to it.
Yeah, I can provide that list.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions?
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. So.
That was easy for me.
You need the button, the "that was easy" button, right?
Yeah. All right, it's already in there.
Okay, so now let's move into the operating budget and some of the requests that council had related to the operating budget. I'm just going to go through these real quickly. The first one was a request to move the Fiesta Peoria event into a city event, city signature event. So instead of this being a producer, or a promotion, promoter-produced event, this would now be a city signature event. The request was to move that into the ongoing, $100,000 into ongoing. We are limited in some of the financial information we have related to that event at this time, but going under the assumption that there's some revenue associated with that, we had, we had identified about $40,000 in revenue. That would be a $60,000 ongoing impact to the general fund for that project or that event, were it to be approved and moved into the budget. The second event request, of course, was for the P-83 project, or, excuse me, I keep calling, I'm used to CIP. The P-83 event, which the request was to move that from a one-time funded event, this is currently a city signature event, and the request was to move that as, from a one-time event, or one-time funded event, to a ongoing funded event. So that, you can see that here, you would reduce the one-time by $72,000 and increase the ongoing by $72,000. That's what's reflected there. Again, that's net based upon an assumption of revenue of about $45,000. The other, the other asks were associated with the paramedic training, two additional. Currently, the budget that's recommended in front of you has three paramedic training requests within it. This would add two additional ones to make that five total for the calendar, or, excuse me, for the fiscal year. That has a one-time impact of $82,000. And of course, the other request was related to park rangers, and that was a request for two additional park rangers. The one-time is related to the vehicles, equipment, uniforms, all of the things that come with, you know, allowing the park rangers to be able to do their job. And the ongoing is the salary and benefits amount. So in total, the requests come to about $88,000, come to $88,000 for one-time, and about $280,000 in ongoing requirements. Take a quick moment just to talk about some funding options that may be available.
I have a question. About that last.
Sure.
But the 72 for the P-83 is already in the budget, so.
Yes, the P-83 is currently funded one-time. On a year-to-year basis, we've been funding this on a one-time basis. The request was to move that into an ongoing.
No, I understand that, but does that change the arithmetic about what has to be added to the budget?
Yes, it would free that up a little bit, yes. Which is why you see the 88 instead of the, you know, there was 160, it's now only 88 on the one-time. So talking about some funding options, you know, when, when we talk about the budget, what you have before you is a balanced budget. And it's kind of a culmination of a number of efforts throughout the departments in order to try to bring forward to you a balanced budget. So when we look at that, it's very tight, and the ability to be able to, you know, fund some of these things, we're going to have to look at some other options for how we do that. One option, of course, is to utilize revenue, and one option might be to limit the sales tax reduction. Currently, council has given us direction, and we've brought forward a budget based on that direction of reducing the sales tax on food for home consumption from 1.8 to 1.6, where you to look at, one tenth, one tenth of a cent has about a value of about $250,000. So if you were to limit that to 1.7%, say, instead of 1.6, that would allow an additional $250,000 to be available. So that's something to consider as an option. Identifying expenditure reductions, we just went through over the last few days discussing with you a number of new budget requests. That's a really, those budget requests included some one-time in there as well, as we had mentioned before. We had, after we balanced to the sales tax reduction, we had about $500,000 in ongoing dollars. So we brought forward some budget requests, and those would be options where council could look to maybe not include all of those new budget requests. For other budgeted expenditures, you certainly could look in the budget at other budgeted expenditures that we currently have. However, those, we would need more time to kind of think through what those might be. Also, there are options for incorporating some of these requests into future budgets. And to kind of talk through that, one is to look at funding these as a one-time for the fiscal year '15. And we can, we believe that we can accommodate some of that. We, of course, have to look at what that means, but, you know, in terms of balancing that out, but we believe we could do that. Or we could address some of these requests as part of mid-year. A couple of these requests may require us kind of to go back and, again, to try to address council's interests associated with these requests. There may be some options that we have for how we might actually deliver on what council would like, maybe not necessarily in the same, you know, right now, or maybe come back and have a chance to analyze that over the next few months and bring back to council a mid-year adjustment. So that's, and fix that during, during the mid-year. We also could defer any of these requests to fiscal year '16, and of course, using this as what I would call early, early council direction. We did come back to, we did come to you in December asking for some direction on the budget. So this would give us a chance to be able to incorporate that if council would be willing to defer any of those, or would be interested in deferring any of those to the fiscal year '16 budget. That was where I was going to end the conversation, allow you to talk.
Okay. Could you back it up one?
Sure.
One, one way to deal with this is to take the Fiesta Peoria and the P-83, shift them back to the one-time. Reduce the paramedic training to one, the park rangers to one, and maybe make those mid-year adjustments. Take a look at the mid-year, because we talked about possibly doing a study session for park rangers and whether more needed, and also the paramedics, and how they're deployed and everything else. And then if, if after the study session, we feel we need to add the bodies, the money would be set aside for a mid-year adjustment. And then you don't have to go through and cut somebody's programs.
We could look at doing that, yes.
What do you think?
So the other stays, and we don't shift the grocery tax either, right?
Well, they, you don't have to shift the grocery tax in that case, or you could reduce the grocery tax 1.7, go ahead and leave these all ongoing, and there's your, there's your half quarter million dollar.
No, I prefer the mid-adjustment.
Mid-year adjustment? And the reduction.
And then we can discuss more specifically both the park rangers and the paramedics, because neither of our chiefs said they needed those right now.
Okay, so you favor one-to-one, shifting both events over to one-time with the promise that they become signatures in the next budget?
Yes, if that was council's direction, we would make that a high priority, obviously the highest priority for the, for the funding allocation in next year's budget.
After letting everyone breathe, of course.
Yeah, you take a couple of weeks off before you start.
I'd like, I'd like to bring something else up if I can.
Sure.
The not-for-profit subcommittee or the committee unanimously agreed this year that we would like to add an additional $50,000 to the, to the general funds, where we, we give the money to the not-for-profit organizations.
For next year.
Yeah, and I, I know we may need to defer that to 2016, but I just want to make sure that I get that out on the table.
Is everybody all right with that?
What did you say?
That the not-for-profit, increasing the budget for them, $50,000, but it would be in '16's budget, not the budget we're dealing with tonight. You have consensus on that?
Yeah, that hasn't been increased for, for a decade.
Okay, you got consensus on that one.
Okay, so what I'm understanding is the consensus is, is that this council would like us to look at place marking in our fiscal year '16 forecast, an additional $50,000 for the not-for-profit funding that the, that.
That comes from the general, general fund.
The general fund, not-for-profit, yes. Got that. Sure.
Then what is really the difference in, is it more budgetary, budgetary terms of having something ongoing versus one-time? If it's going to be in the budget, then what, it's only for budgetary purposes then?
Yeah.
If an event, for example, if P-83 and Fiesta Peoria are going to be in the budget again, funded, so.
So one of the things that I would like to just point out is, first of all, P-83 is currently in the recommended budget as a one-time item. So our ability to keep it as a one-time item with the understanding that council would like us to make that ongoing in '16, that one is, would be taken care of. So that, that funding already exists. Related to the other events and the other one-time funding that's associated with that, obviously, we hold to our principles of sound financial management in the sense that we, we need to identify those sources to be able to pay for those things. One-time, when you talk about one-time revenues versus ongoing revenues, ongoing is that, that forecast that we show you, the one-time, you know, that, we, we have the, with the budget the size of 120 million, the amount that you're talking about here, we will, we think that we would be able to, over the next four, five months or so, be able to ensure that we could find where those revenues would come from and get year-end estimates, all of those types of things. So we have the ability.
But both of these events would be in next year's budget?
Both of these events would be in next year's budget, but be in there as one-time with the understanding that the following year, we would be looking to make them ongoing, assuming council would like.
They'd become signature events.
They would become signature, so it would be a signature event for next year that the city would do, of course, with your assistance.
Okay, but for example, Fiesta Peoria will take place in September. It's a signature event at this point.
Yes, at this point, that would be the case.
Okay.
And I assume that's how you want it.
Yes, absolutely.
Questions? Council? Is everybody all right with that?
So we got one paramedic, one park ranger, and then mid, and then mid-year.
It'd be mid-year adjustments, after we do study sessions as to whether or not both are needed.
Evaluation.
Evaluation.
You want to cut one paramedic and one park ranger?
Right. And then we would do a study session to decide whether or not they needed them. And if they need them, we would then do a mid-year adjustment in the budget to fund those positions. If they don't need them, then we wouldn't have to make the mid-year adjustment.
Well, I think we all know that we need them, right at the back.
Well, that's not the way both police and fire presented yesterday. It is the desire of the council, but it is not necessarily what they asked for.
Well, I think we need the park rangers. That's, that's my opinion. You don't spend any time down Peoria Park, and you don't see the people there, and the kids throwing rocks and everything else, which you need some discipline down there, with these kids throwing rocks at each other, and it's all over the place. If you have park rangers out there looking around, riding their bikes, walking around, even co-compliance can do it, you know, we could stop all this, and as soon as we let it, there is going to be vandalism, you know? And we get a, set attention for people out there, and they're continually sweeping up the rocks and picking up all the garbage, and I think it's important that we have two park rangers, and that's, that's what I'm looking at.
Well, I understand that, but the chief didn't necessarily agree with you. And the compromise here is to do the study session on the park rangers and whether or not they're needed. And if, if after the study session, we all agree that they're needed, then we fund them.
You mean, hire one now, or put them both in the study session?
I'd say both go to the study session.
Just so we're not confused, can you go over what the, the idea that you're offering?
The idea I'm offering is this, shift, shift both of the special events back into one-time for this year with the promise that they become signature events next year.
Okay.
That's the first thing. And then on the paramedics, rather than go for two, go for one, and park rangers, rather than two, go for one. But we don't do that until mid-year. And in the interim between now and the mid-year, we have these, these study sessions, because fire chief, for example, was talking, said he, he's got the people he needs. Police, the police chief says he has the people he needs. Let's do study sessions on the deployment of the paramedics and deployment of, of possible ambulance service, do another study session on, on park rangers and the necessity there. If we decide at that point in time, both are needed, we do the mid-year adjustment.
Okay, so that, that compromise only applies for paramedic training and park rangers, not for the two events?
No, not for the two events. The two events go back to one-time for this year and become permanent next. The param, one paramedic and one ranger might be added after study sessions where we decide whether or not they're needed.
And at that point, both chiefs will be making the case, or will?
Or not.
But we can still.
But what, didn't they already do that?
Well, actually, they did. Bobby sat there and said, no, you didn't need the paramedics right now. And, and the police chief said essentially the same thing. They don't need the increase in bodies right now. We, we, the council are questioning, and we would like to see additions. So rather than overrule them, let's, let them come make their case and talk to us about it. And if we agree with them, then we don't fund it. But if we disagree with them, and we want the extra bodies anyhow, we do the mid-year adjustment. But meanwhile, the money is set aside within the budget to accomplish that mid-year adjustment. Does that make sense?
It makes sense.
Makes sense?
And everything else remains as we.
Everything else remains as is. You good with that? You good with that?
I prefer to do it now. I represent the South, and I do believe we need park rangers in the South with the big park, so.
So you don't agree for now?
Yeah, I don't. I, I support the two park rangers, that's what I mean.
I agree for now.
For now?
For now.
Yeah? That's what we do.
Okay, we will move forward in that direction and ensure that those items that we've discussed are place marked in the forecast for next fiscal year in the appropriate ongoing or one-time pot, in this case, all ongoing. So I appreciate that. Thank you, council members, for going through that. My only other item really was to discuss the, the calendar. We are scheduled for the tentative budget adoption and the capital improvement plan adoption on April 22nd, and we will have the final budget adoption on May 20th. And again, the property tax adoption will occur on June 18th, so we'll be well in time for our July 1 fiscal year start.
Okay. Questions or comments?
Yeah, I have a question. We didn't discuss utility wastewater, instead.
Yes, Councilmember Ames, we, as part of our overall budget presentation, indicated that we were not recommending a utility rate increase for fiscal year 2015.
Because you talked about one or none, but you've decided on none.
We, we were looking at that. It's a, there's lots of variables that go to that, and we will be bringing forward recommendations again in next year's budget.
Ms. Carter?
Yes, I just want to thank you all. I mean, I know that a lot of months and hours and hours and hours upon hours went into preparing this budget, starting about the time that you finished last year's budget. And, you know, it's a really great budget. It's balanced. It doesn't do any harm to any of our citizens, and it does lots and lots of good for all of our core services. So I just want to thank you very much for everything that you put together in all of your presentations, and, you know, did a great job. Appreciate it.
Tony wants to talk.
Bob, I have a question, because there was, and I completely failed to remind staff about this, but there was a question about the promoter events and how much funding there was available, and whether, there was some confusion about the in-kind real money available. Can you clarify?
Sure. Yeah. I do actually have a slide on this, so I want to just share this with you. You did ask this question yesterday, and so we did a little bit of, you know, trying to look through that and kind of really kind of define this a little bit for you. So when we talk about affiliate events, again, these are events, we had the list the other night, they included things like the multicultural festival and the Special Olympics, and the number of things that we've, we've worked with our affiliate partners on. What we put together here is basically what counts towards the $50,000 in-kind amount. So we identified that we had about $50,000 that could be applied for those events as they come along and as they are asked for city assistance. So what you see on the left side of this chart is these are the things that do not count towards the $50,000. And let me just kind of go through those real quickly. This is primarily all of the exempt staff who are currently funded in the city's special events budget, and as well as in other departments around the city, in public safety, public works, you know, communications. And those are all the staff that work on the help with the coordination typically of the event with the affiliate agencies. On-duty police officers who are already on duty at the time of the event, you know, that becomes part of their regular patrol duties, you know, and, and they're able to, to cover that. Utility costs, normal utility costs associated with water and electricity, so, you know, as long as you're not getting a number of generators and things like that, that require permits and other things, the, the utility cost could be covered. Some nominal marketing in terms of, if, from the city's perspective, if there's some low or no cost, we can do e-blasts, obviously, you know, website, utility bill inserts, other available type of collateral that we have to be able to market that event. Some nominal incidentals, depending upon the size of the event, in some cases, we may have, and for example, enough tables and chairs to support a very small event at the amphitheater or something along that line. And then of course, normal wear and tear of the facility and venue, if there are, you know, just the normal, through the normal course of use on an event, that there, there may be some wear and tear. So those are the kinds of things that do not count towards that $50,000. On the other side there is what you see that really counts towards that. So that would be any event staffing, and that would include part-time staffing support that's helping support that event actually on the event day, or just fire setup, take down, all of those types of things. Of course, overtime associated with police, fire, public works, you know, sanitation, those types of things. Permit fees related to inspection fees, related, that may be generator inspections, those types of things, traffic control plans, the, the fee associated with traffic control plans, sales tax permits, those types of things would be part of the permit fees. There is a category in here where we're talking about lost revenue, and this is significant lost revenue, or lost opportunity costs related to facility rental revenues. So let me just kind of explain that a little bit. If you've got an event, there's an event that is identified, and there is, you know, at some of our larger venues, you know, there potentially are significant revenues that the city is not going to collect because that event is occurring. So that can be, or may not be, depending upon what, you know, council decides and how that, how that, you know, how significant that is, I guess you would say. Some of our smaller venues, you know, there probably isn't a real significant loss of revenue associated with that. So that one is still one that we'd have to, you know, vet through, basically through your policy. Did you want to say something real quick, Jeff?
If I may, just to, to make sure, so what we're talking about here is, your policy that you had concurred with in this study session, it said, if there's going to be an event that we want to affiliate with, if it's less than $3,000 of in-kind, then we're going to go ahead and just absorb it, you know, with approval, we'll go ahead. But if it's more, then we want to get some council approval on that. And then in addition, there would be, what kind of funding would that be? The, the piece that comes in is, if the city were to lose a significant amount of revenue by this other event happening, we'd want you to know about that, and we will bring that up to you in the budget process. That's really what we're talking about here. If it is relatively small, similar to what we had seen with Fiesta Peoria, that I would consider that not a significant portion, will, it'll be something you'll be informed of, but we would not suggest it counts in that big number that we're talking about. Does that make sense?
And then the other items would just be things like paid advertising, where newspaper, where we're having to go out and purchase ad space, or, you know, produce commercials or anything along that line, and printing and distribution of, of certain types of marketing materials, if we have to actually have hard costs associated with that. And of course, any other goods and services such as rental equipment, you know, fencing, traffic barricades, trash receptacles, all of those types of things would, would count towards that in-kind amount. So, you know, this was an attempt, Councilmember Rivero, to kind of give some clarity to some of your questions yesterday, so I hope that that, that does, and...
Okay, it, it does clarify, but something that was overlooked at the time by me was, if you could bring back the page, I know it's going to be difficult, for the funding for...
Sure.
Not that funding, the funding for promoter-type events. It was one, I think it was $50,000.
Oh, that's what this is referring to, the promoter...
But the specific events, you had a page on it.
Oh, let me see if I still have that, sorry, I have a few things off of these. This one?
Okay, how many events is that?
Um, one, two, three, four. These are just, and maybe I'll have John or Brendan come down and just make sure, so that they can, this was part of their, their presentation, but it looks like there's five events on there, or other, you know, maybe more, you know, park openings, ceremonies, those types of things.
Okay.
Yeah, and these were just examples, Councilmember Rivero, of what we thought might...
So there's more, there's more events that typically the city funds as promoter events?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Rivero, these were the handful that, that we've had history with, so there's definitely an opportunity for more. This is sort of what filled the page. So we, we, we recognize that there's only so much money and so many cert, this was more about the conversation for us to consider the, the potential types of events on, on folks that would come before us.
And Mr. Sefton, you, you believe that $50,000 for these organizations, if just these and possibly more were to apply, would be enough money?
Because we do not know of, you know, what the ask would be, every event could have a whole different set of sponsorships or needs.
But you do have history, history, right?
With the history that we have, the $50,000, just on the handful, is just there.
I, I would also like to just mention, not all of these will necessarily reach the threshold of even needing to go to the 50, because again, if, if they're smaller events, your proposed policy would allow that up to $3,000 in in-kind would not be counted towards that.
And, I'm going to do this very quickly. Festival of Cheer, what has been the contribution in the past?
Festival of Cheer, and I don't want to speak to specifics because I don't have them in my head, they host that at the sports complex, and they do pay rent for the rental of the facility. They've had a long history of doing that event, but as far as the city contribution, other than them paying the not-for-profit rates, I'm not aware of any specific in-kind or such support for that event.
We help them advertise.
Helped with advertising, so those types of things, the banners at the locations...
Okay, but you don't have an idea of what the cost is for that?
No, nor do I have an idea of what that ask would be. We just know that they're an ongoing event that's been at the facility.
How about for the Special Olympics?
The Special Olympics request would be, and is an opportunity before us, to host for three years, the state ceremonies. We have a direct relationship with Special Olympics in that our recreation division supports programs and, and supplies volunteers for and staff leadership for. This is moving the state games from surprise, I believe, to our facilities within the city. This, the in-kind here would be the capacity to absorb staff time as well as defer some of those. We'd be looking at about $4,600 as an estimate. Festival of Cheer was about $3,000 of the in-kind.
So what's the total amongst all the, the organizations?
Again, I think it's without knowing what the ask would be and how much of it would be on...
But if we were to use last year's...
Yeah, you have to take the 3,000, so that doesn't count. You take 3,000 off of that. So you only really have those. It's, it's right around there. Councilmember Rivero, I would tell you that based on our, just our estimates, and we're guessing, it's probably right around 50, 55, to be honest. If we look at this right here, I'm, you know, what their, what those requests would be, I would tell you it's, it's in the 50 to 60,000 range.
And, and the reason I bring this up, as I've had history with, with doing events, there are some pros to having a promoter or an outside organization do an event. For example, I'm, I'm currently working with Mr. Kurt right on the Northwest Black History Committee. And quickly, I want to mention the benefits of having a promoter lead event, is that we partner with that organization, and there's a possibility that this event is going to end up costing the city, between district funds and money given to this organization from the general fund, in the range of 25 to 30,000. And that's the city investment. When the truth of the matter is, I think this event would cost the city $100,000 if the city did it on its own. Three national entertainment bands, we're going to have a lot of people come out, so with that said, I think there's a benefit. And I want to ask our budget staff if there is any more one-time funds to increase this from 50 to 75,000.
I need to clarify something real quick, and they just reminded me of this. We, if, with council's direction, you just funded Fiesta Peoria, and I had included that in that number that I had just given you.
Okay.
So that was a big chunk of that, that was about 35,000 of that, 40,000 of that. So that does mean that that 50 could go further. If you fund it, if you fund it, fund it as a city signature event, clearly that $50,000 now can benefit many other events, like the multicultural event, like, like the Fiesta, Festival of Cheer, those types of things.
So the, so the 50,000 is available to these organizations without Fiesta Peoria?
Yes, Fiesta Peoria as a funded event, now, we, it wouldn't be an in-kind, you wouldn't be requesting any in-kind for that. The city now takes on the responsibility of putting that event on. So that was a big portion of what we sort of assumed might be part of that 50. So now, that actually does make that 50, I think, stretch much further.
This is the bottom line, if, if each one of these organizations, including the Northwest Black History Committee, asks for the same amount of money they asked for this last year, there's enough money to have...
Yes, I believe that there is, based upon what, what we believe they've asked, what they've asked for in the past, and what we believe some of these, who we don't know what they're going to ask.
Because they asked for 20, or I supported, supported that at the $20,000 level, is that?
The 10, yes, yes, I believe so.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, I, I think, I think we have a good budget here, and I, I think it is tight, and I noticed a lot of the departments really looked carefully what is needed by the city, and that was the recommendation, and some were very close to what the previous year's budget were, and still meeting those needs of, of the citizens. And additionally, in this budget, we are going to give some back to our taxpayers, we're starting to look at that as, as the economy picks up, we, we can do that. So I'm, I'm proud of that, that we're doing that also. And all of you now, next budget, get...
Start tomorrow.
I wouldn't wait until tomorrow.
We'll go ahead and wait till Monday.
We do appreciate your hard work.
Wait, that, that way, before, before we adjourn, I do want to make one other suggestion that should probably be considered at this point in time. I would like to sunset the reduced food tax to one-year, then next year, the council can extend it, or they can revoke it. If, if we don't do that, that money will be lost, and the only way you could recover that tax rate would be to go to the voters. So if there's a downturn in the economy, you can allow it to revert to 1/8. If the economy stays the same or improves, you could keep it at 1/6, or take it back farther down. It should be a decision made on an annual basis by the current council. I would like for that to be considered as well. That way, you have it in your back pocket, in case there's an emergency or there's a problem. If there's not, you can go ahead and continue it as it is.
And that's not part of this budget, though?
Well, I want, I'm trying to find out if we have consensus to make that when the final budget comes forward, with that provision, that it's a sunset for this year to be acted on next year. Mr. Dillon?
The city attorney is walking without his crutches.
Mayor members of council, what my suggestion would be for, to implement what the mayor spoke of, when you bring the final budget to you, we normally bring a number of ordinances that are part of the official process. And in fact, we're going to have to be bringing a ordinance, the sales tax adjustment actually occurs by ordinance, so there would be an ordinance coming to you in any event, and we would simply include that sunset language in that particular ordinance. So when you get the final budget, you actually get a resolution adopting that, as well as a number of ordinances, and then one of those ordinances, in any event, would be any adjustments to the transaction privilege tax pertaining to food, and we would simply include the sunset language in that.
Okay, so that would be, we will deal with that.
You would deal with that at the time of, when you adopt the final budget, it would just be one of several items you'll have on your agenda that night.
Okay, then I would just suggest that the council think about that in the end. Anything else? Thank you, staff, you did a lot of hard work, and we really appreciate it. We're adjourned.
Mayor, council, thank you very much for your, your time and attention.